...presentations, A is staff, or student staff and community recognitions.
Ask Frank Rich to come forward, please. Frank's being recognized tonight for really going the extra mile in his work to help beautify the caboose and the hardware with the, at the Spooner Middle School. And definitely beautifies the school grounds, makes our, our school district and our community a better place. So, thank you for volunteering your time and going the extra mile to, to make those happen. So, in addition to Frank being recognized, also recognize Ryan Predney for his work on that and the Fitzgerald as well. So, thank you, Frank.
Thank you, sir. One last thing. I'm with the Knights of Columbus and we're setting up the crumpet and kit contest for anybody that's into it.
Thank you. I'd like to just do a verbal recognition tonight for the buildings and ground staff for all of the hard work that they did over the summer. They do a tremendous job and they work on a variety of projects and they prepare schools to look great for each and every school year. I did not ask them to come because there is a lot of them and they're very busy. I know we have some that are on vacation, so I'd just like to give them a round of applause and know that we recognize them.
Will Paul Johnson come forward, please? Paul's being recognized for achieving Level 2 in the Wisconsin Association of School Board's Member Recognition Program. It is important to note, this is a, a big accomplishment and a big commitment. Paul, in a 12-month period, completed over 150 hours of school board member professional development. So, Paul, thanks for your dedication and we really appreciate your hard work and let's have a round of applause for that.
Thank you for all those recognitions. We'll be moving on to Item B, the referendum update.
So, since we met last, a number of things taking place with, with the proposed referendum initiative. The last week of August, a referendum update newsletter went out to all, all households in the ZIP codes that make up the Spooner area school districts, a little over 5,500. And in that newsletter, there was some background information about how we've arrived at this point discussing a referendum, some information about the proposed projects, and notification of the community walkthrough sessions and the upcoming school perception survey. This week, the two community walkthrough sessions will take place tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 10th, at 6:00 PM at the Spooner Middle School, and then Thursday night at the Spooner Elementary School, also beginning at 6:00 PM. A very good opportunity to see building conditions firsthand, to learn about the proposed projects, and to get questions answered. So, I encourage everybody to attend and bring a friend with you as well. We really are hoping to have good attendance at those events and to have an opportunity to share some information. Early in October, so just a few weeks away now, the school perception survey will go out. And again, that will go to each household in the ZIP codes that make up the Spooner area school district. So, over 5,500 of those being sent out. It will come to households as a hard copy survey. People have the ability to take it as a hard copy survey and then mail it in, no postage involved, or they may take it online. They go to a, go to a web address, get a, get a code and take it online. And each adult in the household is able to take the survey. So, we'll have additional hard copy surveys on hand in the district office if people want those, or again, they have the ability to get a code and take it online. So, if you have an adult who may be away at school, or serving in the military, or working out of the area, whatever the case may be, they can still participate in that survey.
Thank you. Are there any specific questions about the update? All right. We'll be moving on to Item C, Relay for Life presentation. Do you mind, Melissa? Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
All right. I am going to go ahead and give a Relay for Life update. So, Sarah Hamilton is our district nurse and she is kind of the heart and soul behind all of this. And so, where is it going to go down here? So, Relay for Life 2019. This, it was on the night that of all the bad storms in Barron, and so this was the team that was able to make it there that night. We had a much larger team that was signed up to help and actually raised funds and prepared for the night, but this was the team that was there and could make it safely. And there was a large number of people at the event and we still held our kid games at the night, which was fun for all the kids that were there because otherwise they would have been inside with nothing to do. And it did clear up later on the night, so we were able to take some games outside. Prior to the event, we did Caps for Cancer with the kids. They could pay a dollar to wear a hat on certain days of May. And we also did penny wars in the offices at all three schools where money was raised. Sarah sent out weekly health information during the month of May with cancer education and it was a wonderful event. They always like having Spooner School District involved. We raised $2,617, which was the number two team, and over 20 staff participated. So, we look forward to doing it again next year and thanks.
Thanks for filling in, Mrs. Smith. Well done. And we can give everyone that participated a round of applause even though they're not here. Appreciate their work and effort in that. We'll be moving on to Item D, Review of Revised Northwest Iceman Co-op Agreement.
In the last discussion about boys hockey back in the late spring, there was consensus to have the superintendents of the members, member districts of the Iceman Co-op to meet to discuss revisions to the co-op agreement. Member, member district athletic directors and principals provided input as well. Barron, the host district, worked up the revised agreement. Each member district was asked to seek school board approval of this agreement at either their August or September meetings. You have the revised agreement document before you this evening. The, the co-op provides an opportunity for young men in Spooner and the four other member districts to play WIA sanctioned hockey. Because of player numbers, the co-op has provided for the continuation of competitive boys hockey in the member communities. The agreement provides for promotion and ongoing development of programming supporting boys high school hockey for the next three seasons. Member districts reach consensus on control measures where participation numbers would necessitate consideration of disbanding the co-op or individual member districts spinning off standalone teams. And again, those numbers were reached through consensus and input of the five member districts in the co-op. Another feature of the revised document is an annual meeting. That meeting would follow the end of the hockey season. It would include a review of the season, identification of issues and possible solutions to those issues, a discussion of the financial status as it pertains to the ongoing operations of the co-op, and motions for amendment of the agreement. And I think that that is a, a feature within the agreement that's worth mentioning again. Annually, following the season, there's the ability for member districts to come together, review the agreement, and propose changes. Also, within that document, you'll see the amendment procedures. So, clear steps for making recommendations for amendments and a decision-making process as well. So, what, what we come forward with tonight is the recommendation at a regular meeting next month that, that you sign off on this agreement. Providing some stability for the program and allowing for that, that development and the continuation of the hockey experience for boys here in Spooner and for the other four member districts, soon to be five member districts when Cameron joins the co-op after this season. Questions?
How does this affect that other organization? I think it's called SEHA. Please, I, I understand what you just said, but how does this affect SEHA? If SEHA wanted to do what they want to do and make it just Spooner, would they have to follow the amendment procedures or the other clause that talks about withdrawing? How would that work?
So, so a couple insights to consider on that. First, as a board, you've signed off on the WIAA co-op agreement for this upcoming season already. That took place back in the month of May. So, so you'd be in the co-op for, for one more year. Yep. So, it would require our district to, to leave the co-op and, and it would require you as a board to make the commitment, which would be a substantial commitment, to, to stand up a standalone hockey squad. So, it would be, it wouldn't be just, it wouldn't be just the formation of the team. It'd be equipment, scheduling, lots of logistical considerations along with that. And with that would come some significant financial commitments as well.
So, are we going from the one year that we've already agreed to, to an additional two years right now?
The WIAA co-op agreement is an annual document, so that would come forward. What this agreement does is it provides a commitment of member, member districts to three years, three seasons of the co-op.
So, it sort of overlays. It's not the same exactly. It's a different, two different parties involved.
That's correct.
Then I just have, I just have a question. In this, in this document, there doesn't show anything about, is Barron always going to be that host district or will different schools have different opportunities to be a host district?
Yeah, so I think that, that goes back to the, the importance of that annual review meeting. It, it, at this point, that's not part of the agreement, although there was discussion about that. Certainly Spooner would have interest in taking that responsibility on, but you know, there's some pieces that, that there need to be some assurances of, one large one being access, ongoing access to ice. So, you know, the, this agreement does not preclude the opportunity to be the host district. That, you know, that's, that would not, that would not be in place for this upcoming season, but it could be an item for discussion after the season.
After the season's over?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? I think the part that really I appreciate is that there's annual review and room and a process and a procedure for revisions if needed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haslam. Do we have consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yep.
Yes. Yes. All right. It will move on to the regular board meeting at the end of this month?
Or next week.
Yeah, next week, not the end of this month. Next week. All right. We'll be moving on to Item E, the review of the superintendent, director of operations, principal, director of people services, director of technology, and athletic director job descriptions.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, we don't need a motion.
Is consensus?
I see no reason to not ask for a consensus the way they're written.
Lot of work has gone into these and again, very in-depth. They seem very well-written in that they cover all possible responsibilities under these positions. So, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
All right. We'll be moving on then to Item F, the discussion of the SHS boiler.
This was a memo that was put in front of you guys as you got here tonight. It was also uploaded a little late to the board docs, but we had briefly talked about it at the last board meeting that we were having some issues with the boiler slash heat exchanger at the high school. You have the memo in front of you. There's two options. There's the repair option for a range of about 21,000 to 21, or 21,000 to 27,000, or option two would be a full replacement and that's about 75,000. Administration's recommendation is to do the, do the replacement at this time and push off that, or I'm sorry, do the repair at this time and push off that replacement down the road to see how far we can get.
What's the lifespan of a repair? Do you have any idea?
That was my question.
It's a roll of the dice. Jamar and Cisa Ten said that it could last two to three years, or you know, it could be a couple months. We don't know. I don't think anybody really can, can tell. I don't know. David, do you have any other insights?
Yeah, so I just, you know, some insights that I'd share. First of all, we're making repair, a repair to a 10-year-old boiler that was to be a 20-year life of service boiler. So, not just with the replacement heat coil, but with any of them, you know, there is some, some uncertainty with it. You know, we can be reasonably confident that we'd certainly get through this heating season with that piece and, and hope to have it at some point into the future. And I, you know, by that point, I think the district would have a little better sense of what facilities will look like in the future. And at that point then, also have a more accurate appraisal of what the physical plant needs to be here at the high school.
Now, you mentioned, I'm sorry, one more question popped into my mind. Can't we get any kind of a warranty on the repair work? Because you mentioned it might go in three months. Well, that would be ridiculous.
Oh, on the repair work itself? That's something that we could look into. The warranty on the original has run out.
Right.
We had that checked.
It has to be some sort of a representation on the repair work. I mean, if it's going to break down in the several months, I mean, it's, it's, why would we ever consider that?
We can certainly look into it. You know, we'll indulge Jamar and Cisa Ten in that conversation and we can let you guys know. We have a week until the board meeting, so we'll let you know before the, the board meeting itself.
And so, my question would be, how long is it right now? Any representations as to longevity? And if we wanted to pay extra for some more longevity, what would that cost be and for how long?
Okay. Yep. We'll have answers on Monday night.
Thank you.
Or before.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have general consensus to move that recommendation of replacement based on information gained in the next week to the regular board meeting? Okay. Move on to Item G, to consider line of credit renewal.
Just an annual approval from the board for the line of credit that we would utilize potentially at the end of December or beginning of January. This is to get the ball rolling on the paperwork. We always pay the, whatever we borrow, we always pay that back in full once the tax payments are received in January.
Any discussion? This has become very routine for those of you that have been on the board before. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to Item H, the review of the unusually hazardous transportation plan.
This is something new for me. During the audit this year, one of the testing items that was done was of the transportation. We, we submit information in order to receive funds for our transportation within the district and something that we have had on file down at DPI is an unusually hazardous transportation plan. And a recommendation by the audit team was that we find that and we review it and bring it up to date. So, we're just bringing it in front of you guys to get the approval to go ahead and update it.
Very interesting reading back to, to way back. It was like, wow!
And did you find any updates that needed to be made when I was?
We haven't made, we would after we get the approval.
Approval to go ahead and change.
Yep.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. So, can we give a little bit of an explanation to the audience that that sort of, if anything is within?
Zero to two miles of the district, it's considered a hazardous transportation for our students and we get higher reimbursement for that. And we just have to have a plan on file with DPI. The last one was on file in 2007, so a long time ago. And I wasn't aware that it was a thing until the auditors did the testing on transportation. So, just I think updates on some verbiage and dates.
Yep.
And making sure that it still aligns with DPI's recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll be moving on to Item I, information on the 2019-20 lunch prices.
Again, something that's become very routine. This is information only as it is required by DPI, but we're just notifying the board that we have increased lunch prices by 10 cents for this school year. You have in front of you the old price and the new price, K through 5. Old price was $2.65, new price is $2.75. 6 through 8, $2.90, new price is $3. 9 through 12, $3, new price is $3.10.
For viewing audiences, is this a zero-sum game? Are we only charging what it costs us and because the prices went up? Or is this a DPI mandate for some reason?
If you, if your food service program is running in the red, as ours is, meaning that we overspend expenses versus what we receive in as revenues, you are required by DPI to raise your increase, your, raise or increase your lunch prices. And the maximum that you can is 10% and they give you a spreadsheet where you fill in your information and off that recommendation, it could be 5 cents, it could be 7 cents, but ours is 10 cents.
But this is what, 3%? I mean, it's not even close to 10%, right?
Correct. Almost, yep.
So, we're allowed 10%, but we're actually raising it only?
We're allowed 10 cents.
10 cents?
10 cents. They're 10 cents, yes. That's the maximum that you can.
But we're still in the red, even with the raise?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do we have consensus to move this forward?
It's just informational only.
Oh, informational only. Thank you. 30-60-90 day planning cycle.
Well, we've, we've had a start to the new school year, so there's all the things that, that come with the start of the new school year. Yes, more, more important this evening, what I'd like to share with you is the administration will bring through a, a concept and a example of a different way for us to get at this 30, 60, 90-day planning cycle, as well as the committee, the whole format has worked in a general sense to share information. It does not lend itself well to this discussion as it did in the previous committee format. So, your October committee, the whole, will, will bring something forward, a concept and an example of what that'll look like for your consideration.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Move on to Item K, financial update.
Yep. So, I'll go through the July financial statement quickly and then there's another portion of that, just an update on the audit. So, with the July financial statement, the board has been given that information with a beginning balance of a little over $2 million. We took in total receipts of about $44,000. We did two payrolls in July, which is good. Total expenditures of just shy of $1.5 million, leaving an ending cash balance of $620,587. Any questions about the financial? That?
Yeah, I do. Shannon, what's the, now that the audit is probably done, and I didn't hear you say that, but from past experiences, they were normally wrapped up by now.
Yep.
What was the deficit for this past year?
Yep. So, there's that second memo that was in there. I'll go through that now, if you're okay with that. So, the auditors were onsite for two days on August 20th and 21st. We were able to wrap up all of the onsite testing, which, within two days, we're waiting on the final audit adjustments at this time. In my five years that I've been here, this was the smoothest that it has gone. And we have only one potential minor finding in the transportation that was tested, but we're still working through that. Might not be a finding, so we'll have finalization on that probably by the end of this week. The Fund 10 revenues and expenses, and this is all preliminary until we get the audit adjustments, but we were looking at Fund 10 revenues of $15,391,423, Fund 10 expenses of $15,489,869, leaving a deficit of $98,446. If you remember, the budgeted deficit that was submitted to DPI was $99,207. So, we came in $761 lower than that.
Thank you. And what's the projection for next, this coming year? Do you have any guidance on that?
We are, Dave and I were just looking at it and I think we were sitting at, I know we had a couple different versions and I believe it was, I'd have to pull up, I believe it was about $44,000, but I'd have to go back and look at it. We still have moving targets with some of the, the boiler items and some, you know, those are going to change and move it a little bit. But I can get a finalized, you know, we gave the preliminary back in April and then the final will come after the October 15th aid finalization and then at the annual meeting is when we give the final.
Thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you. Well done, being so close. All right. Item L is the approval of vouchers. Do we have any questions or concerns on any of those? General consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
All right. And I'll take a motion to adjourn at the end of our meeting unless anybody from the audience has anything to?
Add.
Yep, that would be fine. Is that fine?
My name is Curtis Cusworth. I'm the head coach of the Northwest Iceman and I just wanted to see if there were any further questions or any clarity needed. I know that there are some legitimate questions that you guys have asked. So, I just kind of wanted to open it up and kind of also give you a reason why this came about. I know we spoke about setting of parameters and what we needed to do, but we wanted to make sure that it was set in a way to where it would be a healthy split for all the programs. And so, because if you leave one out, it could destroy, and it would destroy the youth programs as well. So, we want to make sure that we have a healthy high school program and we really feel that that will bolster the numbers of the youth and younger levels. So, we did set those numbers to help with that. This is a, I feel this is a very good thing for the, for the hockey program and in no way is it bad for the kids. There's not a single one on the team that wants to dissolve the co-op and we want to preserve that. We know that the future players coming onto the team are going to feel the same way. They all enjoy each other, there are great friendships that are built, and they all stick up for each other 100% all the time. So, I have kids from Spooner down in Barron all the time, Cumberland, I mean... So I have kids from Spooner down in Barron all the time, Cumberland, I mean, my kids up here in Millburn, yeah, they're everywhere. So they, I do want to make sure that it's known that we do want to keep this together as long as possible. Are there any questions that I can ask?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Julie?
So Julie Rich just wanted to let you guys know a couple things about where I stand. My son's in hockey. He's in SEHA. He's been skating since he's been three. So he's been a learner skate. He's 10 now. And this year, he's not playing hockey, he's going to play basketball because Spooner doesn't have an in-house program for him to grow into. So he's like, why would I, why do I want to play hockey? I should start playing basketball because I'm not going to be able to play it in high school because we've already discussed, you're not driving to Barron every day for practice. So if the co-op is in effect and it's still in Barron, he won't be able to play in high school. So he's playing basketball. So we're one family that's leaving hockey because Spooner doesn't have an in-house program and kind of refuses to even look at it. I'm not sure why we're going from a one-year to a three-year deal. I know you said we have to renew it every year. So if you want to get out of this agreement next year, are you bound by the three-year deal?
No. Well, not based on the annual review. So based on the annual review, if all parties agree that this is the time to either form a standalone team or dissolve the co-op, that would be an option each year. So it's for the longevity of the program and planning purposes.
But do, would we have to follow the rules for leaving the co-op in order to leave it ever?
If they wanted to amend the agreement at that annual point, because for whatever reason, they would be able to amend that.
Okay. I was just wondering, because it seems like we're kind of getting into something bigger and longer than what we're used to.
Right.
So there's a lot of concern, parents out there. I had no plan of saying anything, but I was just listening, and I just want you to know that my son's playing basketball, and he really loves hockey and he loves basketball, but what's his future in hockey in Spooner? He doesn't want to go to Barron. We can't afford it. We don't have the time for it. So it's just kind of sad.
And I think that as discussion had gone on through the entire last year, everyone's intent is to have hockey in Spooner. So it's, I think that that is our ultimate goal.
Is that our ultimate goal? Is that our superintendent's goal?
It's, that's not a fair, that for, it was explicitly stated from coaching staff from, in the spring. So right now, today, our agenda item is the agreement, and that's what we're going to keep our focus and conversation on. What we want is what's best for students and players in our district. And right now, this is the agreement that we are voting on and going to be deciding on next week, to maintain a three-year agreement that's able to be amended based on the parties that are involved in the program in each member district.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Anyone else? Anything else? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.